Okay. Let's get started. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's Clear Lake City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Elizabeth Larson. I'm editor and publisher of Lake County News, and I'll be tonight's moderator. We're glad to host the candidates in this year's race for the Clear Lake City Council, and it's the largest field I've ever done one of these forums for, so we've had to do a little bit of arranging, but we're glad to have them all here tonight. So, I'm going to introduce them in alphabetical order, the way they're seated. So, starting at the left, we have David Claffey. We have Tara Downey. We have Brett Freeman. Jessica Hooton. Joyce Overton. Russell Purdock. James Rivera. And Mary Wilson. The hope tonight is that you'll get to know a little bit more about these votes, and as a way of preparing yourself to vote in November. What we're going to do is start with one-minute openings, so that they can introduce themselves to you. And from there, we'll go through a series of questions submitted by community members. We have a large field of candidates, so in order to move through more questions, the answer time for the questions has been limited to a minute and a half for each, again, during the question-answer period. That will be followed by closing statements, when we're going to give them a little bit more time. We'll give them two minutes each to wrap up, as we bring the evening to a close. We've already just described it. We have a yellow card to warn everybody, and then you will hear the alarm when it's time to wrap it up. So, let's get started. We're going to go with opening statements in alphabetical order. And again, each candidate will have one minute for their opening statement. So, proceeding in alphabetical order, we'll begin with David Claffey.
Hi, everyone. David Claffey here. It's been an honor to serve on the city council for the last four years. I moved to Clear Lake in 2017, by the Bay Area, before that, Massachusetts. I joined the Army when I was 18 to pay for college, spent some time in England and Korea, a year in Iraq, and then came back and started working on my communications degree. I've had jobs where I've helped small businesses grow, consumer tech companies, building audiences. I've worked in real estate finance, or the technology side of that, anyway. And now, I'm working with a B2B software company that is focused on artificial intelligence. Since moving here, I got really involved in the community. I started on the marketing committee for the city. I met Councilman Overton and Supervisor Sabatier, and they wouldn't let me leave. Since then, I've been on the chair of the senior senate. I've been on the chair of Lake County Recreation Agency. I've served as the president of Rotary, and I'm also on the PAC dinner. Did that make you? All right. More to come. Thank you.
Tara.
Good evening. So, my name is Tara Downey. I grew up in Clear Lake Oaks. I, you know, after high school, I lived in the Bay Area for a while. I worked as a veterinary tech during college. And then, once in my early twenties, I wanted to start a family, so I moved back -- excuse me. I moved back here to Lake County. I've lived in Clear Lake now for four years. I own my house. I'm married. I have two kids. I work at Lower Lake High School. I've been there for four years, and I'm also the varsity softball coach at Lower Lake High School.
Thank you. Brett.
Most of you -- a lot of you know me. I probably don't even need this thing, because I'm pretty loud. My family has been part of this area for over 70 years. They bought a house here 46 years ago, two blocks away from here. Right out of high school, I pretty much loved this area, so I kept coming back. Decided in 2000 to live here permanently. I've lived on the same street, besides one year that I left to go to Middletown for a little bit, remodel while I sold my other house. Same street. I was on the valley fire cleanup with the state of California as a consultant, and also Pacific States. They liked the job I did. I actually also came back here and did the sulfur fire cleanup. I love this town, and I really think we're going to go somewhere.
Thank you. Jessica.
Hi, I am Jessica Hooton, and firstly, I'm a wife and a mother to three beautiful children. I graduated as a scholar athlete from Lower Lake High School, and immediately began working here. I have eight years of experience in the service and customer service industry, where I got to serve and grow to know many different types of people in this community. Moving on from serving, I now have 10 years of full-time experience as a Realtor, serving as an advocate for a city to people who are interested in moving here, as well as the greater Lake County. My husband and I together created a nonprofit for kids, Lake Days. I'm a board member and treasurer of the Lower Lake Youth Football Team. I'm involved in CORE, which is a local wrestling program. I'm also a member of First Assembly of GAW here in Clear Lake, and yeah, that's me.
Thank you. Joyce.
Hi, my name is Joyce Overton, and I have sat on the city council for 20 years. This is my last session of 20 years. I moved here in 1972. I moved away when I grew up, got married. I came back in 95 permanently. I've been back and forth several times. I was lucky enough to go to Woodland College, which was Uba College at the time. I've worked for a corporation down in the Bay Area for 10 years, running a corporation. I've had my own small business. I have started the Lake County Youth Services here, which now houses the youth center. And I'm looking forward to serving. It's been my pleasure serving you guys for 20 years. I look forward to doing it some more.
Thank you. Russ.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. My name's Russ Purdock. I was born and raised here in Lake County. I moved to Clear Lake in 1977, all the way from Clear Lake Oaks. I went to school here, graduated from Lower Lake High School, also as a scholar athlete. Went to college at Uba College Local Campus, and also the main campus. Graduated from there, then went to Sac State, got my bachelor's degree, and came back here to go to work. Worked 25 years at the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Then went to work selling insurance. There were some fires in Lake County shortly after that. Selling insurance became a little difficult to do, so I went to work for Adventist Health Hospital. COVID saw the end of that, so then I went to work for a company called Well Path, which is where I work now. I am married to a wonderful lady, and we together have six beautiful kids and grandkids. And I am running for city council, because I have a lot more work to do here in Clear Lake, and finish some projects that we started, and I am excited to do that and to represent each and every one of you as well as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
Good evening, everybody. My name's James Rivera, and I've been a community member for 30 years plus. I was an active member of the community with my coaching and my teaching of all the sports in Lake County that I could, in several different categories. I have been a member of the community here in Clear Lake for 11 years. All of my kids went to school here, and I think it was just time for me to be an active member of the city's future. And I appreciate you guys' vote.
Thank you. Mary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Wilson. I moved to Lake County eight years ago for the job that I hold at Woodland Community College. I'm a trained anthropologist. I have a master's and bachelor's degree in anthropology, and I have minor in both for cross-cultural communication. I have been very active in my role as the adult education navigator and outreach specialist at events throughout the community for the past seven years. And I am also -- I sit on the Lake County Continuum of Care Committee as somebody who helps with grant selection and program evaluation. I also -- and I've been sitting on that since 2020. I also sit on the Lake County Subcommittee for our Workforce Investment Board, the Workforce Alliance of North Bay, and I am president of the Middleton Arts Center Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, for getting this straight. Okay, so Monica and her equipment gets set up just a second, and she's doing that. So, now we're going to move into the questions. Based on the number drawn, James gets to go first, and then we'll rotate through that way. And we're going to do, again, it's a minute and a half response time. And I will read the questions. If at any point you need me to reread the question, please feel free just to ask. And again, she will flag you at 30 seconds left. And again, when that alarm, the peeper goes off, don't feel like you have to stop, you know, mid-sense. Finish your thought. And if there's something you can't quite get to, write it down, and then during the closing, you get to talk about whatever you want to talk about. So, ready? The equipment is ready. All right, so let's get started. The first question, we'll start with James. Why are you running for the Clear Lake City Council? What qualifications and experience do you possess that will make you a good council member?
I'm running for city council, because I think it's time for change. I really do think that our community has a lot to offer, and I think that our future is unlimited. My qualifications are, I served on my tribal council for three years. I served on my tribal health board for six years, and I think that I've been involved, like what others have said, you know, in the fires. I was a part of the emergency response team. Red Cross was part of our tribe. It was part of our area that we handled with the fires. And I was an active person in housing, or community members that didn't, that lost their homes. And I think that I still have one child that's going through the school system, and I think that that was, that's one area that needs to be touched on. I think that the way that our children are, needs to be addressed. Our kids come first, our community second, and our environment third. And, you know, if they're not all healthy, we're not healthy. And I think that it's time for us to start addressing those issues in the community.
Thank you.
So, I want to have a safe place for people to raise their families and live fulfilling lives, happy, fulfilling lives. I think that it's time that we are more, that we work together more. I see a lot of divisiveness in the community, and I believe in a community where every voice matters, where everybody can come together to tackle the issues that affect us, our lives daily. As I said before, I'm a trained anthropologist. I have a lot of great research skills. I, my experience on the Lake County, on the Lake County Continuum of Care, helps me understand one of the things that I think is most important to us, is that we have affordable housing and the other things around that. In order to have sustainable, in order for people to have family, sustainable employment, which is what we need to have, a vibrant economic community, we need to have the affordable housing, and we need to have education and training that support a vital workforce.
Thank you. Pass that. Okay, David.
Read the city. We have some complex problems. There's no easy fixes to some of these problems. We really have to think big, think responsibly, think at scale, and not address the symptoms of those problems. You know, my background is focused on productivity. It's focused on maximizing value, and it's really focused at getting to the core issues that a company faces, that a business owner faces, or that a community faces. The city needs economic growth. Economic growth by any means. We need quality housing. We need the resources to solve some of the problems that we have. We can keep pushing pennies around and trying to address code enforcement, or animal control, or water issues, or whatever else is going to come up in this debate, but when it comes down to it, we need a tax base that will allow us to solve some of these problems currently. So, I think I have the background to address those problems, to solve these big problems. And Jacob.
Thank you. Tara.
So, as I was pulling up here in the parking lot, I was looking across at the park, and at the park were two 16-year-old boys who I recognized, and they were students at Lower Lake High School. And that vision right there is the reason why I'm here, is the future of this community, the youth, the people who are going to end up living here just like us, and grow old, and raise families, and be here for the long run. I believe that I am that person that has the ear of the youth, and I believe that they are the future of this community. I also believe that public safety is a huge thing in this community. I believe that if our streets need to be safer, we need more streetlights. It is so tragic to hear on the scanner and on the radio when people are getting hit by cars. It's dark. We live in a community where not everyone has a vehicle, and I believe that we need to have safer streets for people to walk on or cross the road. I also believe, too, that there's a huge division between the community and the city of Clear Lake. And I believe that I could be that person that can buffer that and make that more of a relationship, a better relationship. So, that's it.
Thank you. Brett.
So, one of the reasons why I'm running for city council is because we do have a division here. Not only do we have a division with the city and water, or with the police departments or fire departments, or with the Coination, we have a division of, we also have, we have elderly people that came here as a resort town. That's what my parents came here for. My mom left, because it wasn't a resort town anymore. But we also have our low-income, we have our middle-aged people. They all want to grow. We need to grow safely, and not only for our city to be safe, we need our tourists to be safe. We need to bring back more tourism here. And most of the people that drive down the street, our main street, they look at it and they're like, "I'm not coming back here. I was over here at the park two years ago when a shooting happened. I was like, I don't even want to come out here now." We need a lot of work in this town, and with me being on a lot of the fires cleanups, I've been used as a mediator between the state of California and the homeowners. Homeowners are being told that their houses are getting cleaned up right away. If it doesn't happen, homeowners get mad, and I've been put in as a mediator to come talk to them calmly now. I feel that we really need a mediator between everybody in this town right now, and somebody that can get along with both sides and talk to everybody.
Thank you. Jessica.
So, I have chosen to run for a seat on the city council, because I see a need for a new perspective. I think one that's youth-focused, something that's family-oriented, and someone that can relate with a local working individual that resides here. I think there are too many underrepresented people in our community here at the city council table, and I think that I can serve as a way to give them a voice and advocate for them. I think I would qualify for that well, with my background in service industry. Every day, I got to listen to people and their problems, their life issues, their concerns, their worries, the things that made them happy, and so I think that I would have a good ear to listen to people, just listen to people, and bring forward their concerns. I hope to be able to have a seat and help steer our community's growth in a way that preserves our small-town charm. Being a Realtor, when I get to introduce people to here, that is what really brings them here. They really see the small-town charm that we have, and I just would hate to see it lost, so.
Thank you. Joyce.
Well, when I ran 20 years ago, I remember sitting right here in front of everybody, and what everybody wanted was transparency, which we kind of feel like we have accomplished. Open government, which we have accomplished. There isn't anything you can't find on our website. If you'd like to look, this there. The meetings are open now. They're televised, they're recorded, so if you want to watch them, you can watch them pretty much at your leisure. You know, I started the youth center here because of, we didn't have anything for them. Our skate park was not open. I was lucky enough to get a group together, and we raised the first money to fund that to reopen it, and the city has been able to keep it open ever since, with the progress of hoping to do a bigger and better one in the future. I see our future has changed so much. You know, we've done so many roads, 53 miles of road, which is unheard of for a small town like this. I think what people need to realize is, we're a very young city, and it does take time to get these things accomplished, where, you know, when we came, the roads were horrible, and we're fixing that. We've got more lighting, and I understand we need more, but there is, there's been lighting put up. Our park is beautiful. We've really worked hard to make that happen. We've got growth coming, and I feel like, you know, we're progressing, and I'd like to stay here and finish that progression. So, thank you very much for allowing me to do that.
Thank you. Russ.
Thank you. So, for experience, gosh, I started out when I was 11, joined Boy Scouts, learned about government, and became an Eagle Scout after that. On that path, went to college, learned about government, learned about what I could do to bring back to Lake County, because this is where I wanted to live and raise my children, where I wanted to invest. I got asked to sit on the city planning commission, and I served for four years on that, and I got to learn about the codes, and how planning and everything works to develop a city, funding and all the resources that go along with that. I then was asked if I could sit on city council, because there were some problems going on, and there was a big divide in the council at that time, in 2014, when we had people doing drive-bys, we had people doing home invasions, because marijuana growing was illegal and it was completely out of control. And I am a good leader, and I proved that when we, thankfully, a guy by the name of Bruno Sabatier and I, were elected to the council at that time, when we went to work to try to resolve some of the problems that were happening in our community that were making it unsafe, and where children didn't feel safe to go and play in the park. Since that time, we've, I think we've turned quite a bit around. People have mentioned the road project. I was a driving force for Measure V. I even helped with Measure P, although I was a young guy at the time, but it was what we needed. I worked with Adventist Health to try to get playground equipment, and I'm proud to be a Rotary member, to get exercise equipment in the parks. And as you can see in the picture over there, where we were doing a shovel to change the old park into what the park is today, funding in those things is difficult to get, but we were able to do it, and that's what I can bring to the council, is that leadership.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mary. What do you see as the three biggest problems or issues within the city?
For me, the three biggest problems are the lack of affordable housing. The, we have a 21% of our citizens do not have a high school diploma and economic development. They're all linked. If you cannot, if you don't have a place to live, it's hard to do a job. It's hard to get up in the morning when you're living in your car. If you do not have a high school diploma, you are not going to be able to work most jobs in the county. And it's not just that we don't have high school diplomas. The literacy rate for the state of California, about 32% of the population in the state of California has a low literacy rate, and it's even lower in Lake County. I test people every day, and many people only can read at the sixth grade level. Additionally, we have a population in the city that speaks Spanish at home, and they also can, about 20% of the population in the city speaks Spanish at home, and Lower Lake High School is not really getting people ready to go to college and be able to do English classes. So, all of those things are interrelated, and we have to address them all in order to have people who become tax-paying citizens.
Thank you. Pass that to David. David.
Yeah, so I think the three biggest problems. Number one, we need the 21st century infrastructure. 22nd century, we're 25 years behind, I think. You know, we've talked a lot about water, but it goes beyond its sewer, its roads, its broncos. There's a lot that is missing, because we're a rural community, and corporations ignore us. So, that is something that we have really been pushing for. We've been applying scrutiny across all those different areas. The other is housing, and Aaron touched on this. We are a predicament with housing, construction costs. We need quality housing in this city. The new housing development, 80 units over by the senior center, built up in a week. All of Lake County is struggling with housing, and people are coming here, because we're one of the few areas in Lake County that is able to build. We've actually made huge strides. Lake County is struggling to build new homes. We're struggling to build new quality, middle-class homes, and a lot of that has to do with construction costs. So, that is something that we have tried to address and will continue to address. And then, I think schools is a great angle here, but really it comes down to job skills. One of the things that we did as a city was fill in the gap, the tuition gap, the funding gap for Clear Lake residents. So, anyone in Clear Lake, you can go to school at Woodland Community College here and get whatever degree you want. Now, do they have the degrees we need for the 21st century? I'm not quite sure yet. Hopefully, the new dean can work with us to get some progress.
Thank you. Tara.
So, my biggest thing that I always question myself is, why do people live here? We live here for the small community. We live here because there's no traffic. I mean, you couldn't get me, you couldn't pay me to go back to the Bay Area. So, with that, I know that housing is an issue, but what does that mean for our roads? What does that mean in the long term? Can we accommodate that? I don't know. I think that's where something we'll look into, but it's definitely a question. I think the biggest problems in the community would be tourism. We need to promote more tourism. We need better hotels. Like, when people come here, like even my parents, they're like, "Where do I stay?" Because they live in Rapid City. I'm like, "The best western is probably your Best Bed," or an Airbnb. But, I mean, we need hotels. We need hotels for our families visiting, our, you know, our past tournaments that go on, so tourism is something big, and I think there's other elements that go along with it that we could provide in Clear Lake. Economic growth is also another one. You know, I do believe that we do need better shopping for our people who are here. I do believe that, and restaurants. Another thing is animal control. We need actual animal control here in Clear Lake. We need to clean our streets of the strays. I live in Clear Lake. I see it. I'm around it. I watch people every day feed the ferals, which I think is great. They need food, but at the same time, let's spay in their room. And the nearest place we could do that is in Kelseyville. So, we need more programs like that for our community members. We need to provide more services like that.
Thank you. Brett.
So, the three things I see here, we need animal control, definitely. People know that I just picked up a cat with three kittens at my house. I don't know how that would have happened. We also need transparency. We have no transparency with the city. The city does not let us know what's going on. We need to talk about it. We need to make decisions together, not allow our city council just to make the decisions for us. I feel that growth economics is a big one, too. We do need to get more stuff coming here. That's the only way we're going to get tourism. We need restaurants. We don't have any restaurants here. Everyone's tired of going to the same exact restaurants, stores. There's really no shopping here, Walmart. I don't like to shop at Walmart that much, unless I have to. But definitely, we need growth, but safely.
Thank you. Jessica.
So, in my opinion, the three biggest problems that we're facing, I'll agree with the other candidates on housing. I think we have a huge shortage of median income home, the working class. I think we have a huge shortage of median income home, the working class. You know, we hope to develop these airport properties and have a bigger, more robust downtown, but where are these people, these kinds of people that are going to have entrepreneurial spirit and create these businesses, where are they going to want to reside? Often, you know, in my work, I'll sell homes to them out of the city, in the Riviera or Hidden Valley. It's just the image that those communities give off sometimes is far greater than what we have to offer right now. And I think to help with that, the cities, I'll say curb appeal, another real estate kind of term, you know, are, what we already have right now, I think we could do a better job in maintaining. Any city easement that has weeds that are growing over sidewalks or over three feet tall, if there's poison oak on the side of the road, I think that we can try to implicate a better process or, you know, checklist of how to take care of these things before they become an issue and people have to see them as an eyesore. And then I think relatable youth outreach is great. I am really into the youth and I think that it starts with them and I think fostering their needs and meeting what they're, what they need and kind of getting on their level early, as early as we can is going to give us a big benefit to using them as productive members of our community later.
Thank you. Joyce?
Well, I believe that our senior citizens are number one thing that we need to be watching for and I think that that's been a lack of pretty much any city or county. They seem to forget that they exist. We all live on, once you reach a senior, you're either working and on social security or you're living on a very low income. I see that our economic development of our city would help with providing maybe some of those jobs that senior citizens do need to have in order to live anywhere. I'm not too much on building more apartment complexes, but I am for building townhouses that people can buy and have their first home and work their way up into other things instead of just always staying low income. We need to start looking more at the middle income in order to bring people from having to rent to ownership. I think that's important. When you own, you have more, you know, more pride in what your community looks like. So, I really feel like ownership is like the number one thing. Of course, our youth, anything to do with youth, our education is important, you know, keeping them in, going forward and talking them into, showing them how to get to college and helping them do those things. So, I think the more that the city can help with some education through our community colleges, extremely important to keep them moving on. And then, of course, I think we all know economic development is a must. In order to keep our city prosperous, we have to have taxes coming in, we have to have people have jobs and the only way to do that is for our growth to happen.
Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. We need to clean our city and one of the ways we can do that is with a more robust code enforcement. The problem with code enforcement is everybody wants the town cleaned up until they get the citation to tell them to clean their property up. And that's one of the things that we're talking about here tonight is that conflict between what the city's trying to do and when people push back. We do need to clean up our neighborhoods and we need to make them safer and I appreciate the Clear Lake Police Department and the work that they're doing. When I was hired here, we had a lot of vacancies and I think the current city council has worked really hard in the last 10 years to see that now our vacancies, we're pretty much full, we're at full staff, we've got people who want to stay and work here and that's very important. But again, I think we need to help support our code enforcement. Ways that we do that, and I've done this, is through funding. We need more funding. I don't know that, I think we're taxed to death in California, so I'm not necessarily interested in taxes, but I do enjoy using other people's money and that's through grants. So, I'm very open in looking for ways that we can do that and the city is very active in hunting for grants to help and clean up our town. Our poverty levels are high. We need to work to build and work with our children to create a workforce here. Employers come in, businesses try to start and there's not really people who they can hire to kind of work in their businesses. So, we need to focus on that. Not everybody's made for going to college. There's nothing wrong with making, working a trade. I would like to see some of our local colleges maybe focus on that. And then development and education for a strong workforce.
Thank you. James?
My feelings are that our young people need more attention. I feel that our youth is very important to our future. The more that they're involved, the more that they know, the more that we give them the knowledge of our future is something that is going to be our support when we don't have our support anymore. My second thing is our elders. Our elders need to be taken care of. I know that our community has changed from being a retirement community to being a family-oriented community and those families are going to be the ones that are going to be making the decisions for our future. And I think that a lot of the, a lot of the future endeavors that are going to be for Lake County, we should invest in our local community, small-town businesses right now because I think that they're the ones that are struggling, trying to stay open when these big corporations come in and shut them down. And I really do feel that our homeless situation needs to be addressed. I know that there's not a lot out there to offer them, but we can create programs that can involve our homeless situations and make it better for our community. And our community needs to be more involved in all the decisions that we make for this city.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with David. Animal control is and always has been an issue of significant concern in Clear Lake and Lake County as a whole. In the city, there are reports of multiple dog boarding situations as well as dangerous dogs terrorizing residents and killing other pets. If elected, what would you do to abate the large number of dogs running loose that are a nuisance and a public safety hazard? Also, would you support the city donating to nonprofits that are working to bring low-cost spay-and-neuter clinics to the community?
So, animal control's been an issue for a long time here in Clear Lake. Cities our size typically don't have a control division. I know before I was elected, there was a lot of concern around animal control. We decided to keep ours here and I'm glad we did. About a year and a half ago, we had really poor conditions at our shelter and I was one of their hardest critics. Through that, I got to meet some community members and we talked about solutions and I think in the near future, we're going to have some tough decisions to make on how we move forward. The biggest thing that we can do to address the stray population is enforcement. A lot of this stems from bad pet owners, bad animal owners, people who let their dogs roam, abandon their dogs, don't license their dog and as you know here in Clear Lake, to license your dog, your dog has to be spayed and neutered and we have not been enforcing that nearly as well as we should. And quite frankly, at this point, we don't have a strategy to do that and that's something we need to change and I think we're starting to put the pieces into place to do that. There's also a funding issue with this and you have to stack, Rick, how much you want to spend on animal control versus some of the other major problems. We just want to list here and I think everyone named a different problem here in this city. All of that costs money. All of that only gets solved with economic development and bringing more resources to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara?
Well, this obviously is a passion of mine. So, we need a place where we can bring stray cats and dogs. We don't have the room or the facilities. We need an actual SPCA here in Clear Lake. We need a crackdown on backyard breeding. It's so bad. I have cat puppies running down my street every week and kittens. So, it's something that needs to be addressed. As far as funding, like what David said, I mean, there's ways around it. There's grants for SPCA's and not only that, we can have fundraisers. There's always a way we can start small and just work from that. And then, like I said, we need spay-and-neuter clinics, we need vaccine clinics, maybe a mobile van that goes around into these communities and people that don't have vehicles. So, there's, or maybe set something up at Austin Park. So, there's definitely things that we can do little by little and I think that will make a difference.
Thank you. Brett?
We definitely have animal control wrong here. What's happening right now is not working. It needs to change. Definitely, the funding is a big thing, but we are wasting money on other things that we shouldn't even be wasting money on, I feel. I feel that North Bay is not doing its job. I think it should be changed. This has been addressed before with the wording of we will never have an animal control here in Clear Lake, again, run by us. If it's not by us, we need to find somebody else. The strays, I agree with her. We need to get a mobile unit or get somebody, get an internship from UC Davis for the vets tool to come up here and work with us. SPCA, I'm sure there's a building somewhere here that we could figure out to change over to an animal vet hospital to spay and neuter these animals. They're multiplying faster than our children are and our youth.
Thank you. Jessica?
Tara said it very well and very clear. I don't know if I can say anything more than her, but I think that, you know, I agree with everybody's opinion about what's going on now, that it's not really working out great for us. I think that looking into SPCA and getting something like that here would be a benefit. Somewhere to really take the animals that are on the streets and lock them up, so to speak, until our owners take some kind of responsibility and let there be, you know, unfortunately, maybe more, just fees associated with them getting them out and so they'll lock them up and try and just keep them, keep them close to home. I think I would support a nonprofit spay-and-neuter clinic. I think anything right now in addition to what we have would be good.
Thank you. Joyce?
Well, animal control, we all know, is an issue here and it's probably an issue in every single city that you can possibly go to. I think every city goes through this. I do believe that we need to start making more citations to the people. Animal control is in a very, very expensive part of a city operation. We tried it. It was just too much for us. We couldn't keep the health. We tried the county. That did not work out at all and it was very expensive and we got even less service than what we're doing now. I am all for everybody joining together that says they want to do something with the animals. I think that we should become a team. We should all work together. People say they want to do the good things for the animals, but yet I think we have a hard time getting everybody together to actually do that. And I don't think it's going to make much difference who we have here, whether it's North Bay or anybody else, animal control is always going to be an issue. I work with Mike Jamison Ranch, we're getting ready to have a clinic here for shots and stuff. I work with SPCA through a grant that I got from my seniors to try to spay and neuter as many animals as we could for them. Unfortunately, SPCA cannot keep up with. It is not necessarily, our biggest problem is veterinarians. That is our number one problem. It's not that we couldn't raise the money to do spay and neutering and all that, but you cannot get the vets. Humboldt County has one vet for their whole county. We're lucky that we have the vets that we do, but most of them aren't going to volunteer. They're very expensive to use their facilities, so the SPCA was the only thing that I could use at the senior center because it was the only reasonable one. It was $150 that we had to pay, but if they go to the doc, you know, a vet here, it can be $450 and up, you know. So, I think, I don't think what we do, but it's the veterinarians that we need to focus on, trying to bring in here.
Thank you. Russ?
I did a little choice, yes. No, animal control's always been a problem. I remember when animal control's handled by the county and we had struggles. They would start their day, they would come down halfway through that day, would have them for a couple hours on-site and then be back up to Lakeport. Didn't work out. We tried our own in-house through this police department of animal control and there were times when we had some good successes. We had people on board, but then training and vacancies fell upon us and we couldn't meet what the community wanted. At the time, we had Chief White working here. He did a lot of research. He worked very hard. He found, you know, like everybody already knew, our facilities need to be updated. He was able to find some money, get the funding for that because this is how it works, folks. The budget for the city, the budget for the county, it's a line item budget. There's only so much money in each of those pots that we have to spend and there's only so much within animal control services that we have to spend. So, we are trying to work outside that or I appreciate my peers on city council who meet with the folks that want to volunteer, that try to help support the volunteers that want to do those things, but as Joyce pointed out, veterinarians are very expensive and we would love to bring SPC in if they want to come. Sometimes we can't bring them in. So, it's a constant problem. It's something we're constantly working on, constantly bedding new ideas, but for the time being and when we contracted with North Bay, that was the best option we had at the time. Now, is that something we need to revisit from time to time? I absolutely believe that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. James?
I totally agree with everybody that what they spoke about, that we need help, that our population of animals that are running loose and running wild in our community is just getting out of control. I think fundraisers would help. I honestly think that us going after the backyard breeders and even the breeders that are registered, I think that they need to start stepping up. You know, it's not, it's unfortunate that the way that they look at things is when they get a batch of puppies or kittens and they don't turn out the way they want them, they just let them go. They take them and they dump them at the grocery store or dump them on a side street and then there you go. It's part of our community and it's our responsibility as a community to be aware of those kind of people that are out there that are doing the overbreeding and doing the, trying to make a big profit and I think that it's our responsibility to recognize and go after them, basically, and make them accountable for what it is that they're doing to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
So, feral animals are a problem worldwide in cities and in rural areas and there's actually never going to be any permanent solution. Part of it's cultural. When I was growing up, a long time ago, there were not feral animals like there are now and that, there's something that's changed. So, we have to have a cultural change. I'm not sure exactly how to do that, but the first thing we have to do, and we'll go back to what David said, we have to enforce the laws that are in place. You're supposed to spay your animal within four, within their first four months and that's not happening. And also, we have a lot of people feeding feral cats, not so much feral dogs. Then we have to look at, well, what's the difference between the dogs and the cats? People spay the cats and then they let them loose and they have these feral cat colonies and they're supposed to be licensed and you're supposed to know, be able to identify every one of those cats you're feeding and people aren't doing that. I think what we have to have is we have to have a task force that looks into, has there been any place in the world that has had any measured success on their feral animal population?
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Tara, so if you pass that again, thank you. So, the next, the next two questions, we're going to talk about water, which I think is one of the big issues in this campaign cycle. And so, I'm going to read some preambles and context for these questions and then I'll ask the question. So, the city government and the three water companies or districts that operate within the city limits, Highland's Mutual Water Company, Golden State Water Company, and Conopde County Water District, have increasingly been at odds over issues to do with operations, management, and capacity. These issues have arisen in part due to efforts to bring new development projects to the city and to rebuild after fires that have damaged infrastructure. The result is that the city appears to favor a consolidation approach to the water companies and districts, which they have indicated they do not support. At the Clear Lake City Council's June 6 meeting, Robert Roscoe, a respected water resources expert and consultant, gave a presentation on the city's water supply, which he lauded the three companies for their work to treat Clear Lake's water, which he said is a challenge. However, Roscoe said that for Clear Lake's size, three separate entities provide water services a lot. Roscoe suggested there would be greater opportunities for grant availability, less disjointed water service, and better overall planning if a unified approach to water service was taken rather than having three different water entities acting independently. What is your perspective on Roscoe's suggestions? How, as a city council member, would you approach this matter of an independent versus a unified approach to providing a unified approach to providing water to city residents and businesses? Tara, you go first.
Wow, the hot seat. Where to begin? Obviously, this is a big argument and a big situation going on within the city right now, I believe there's a huge miscommunication between the two, between the city and the water companies. Personally, what I think is that there needs to be a conversation, and I don't, I know that there has been conversations, but I think the conversations between the, between the right people need to happen. I think there's a lot of emotion going on here, and I think that that has to be put to the side. I do believe that the water companies can get these grants, I do believe that, and I know the city can probably get bigger grants, but I know the water companies can get the grants as well. So, I believe that, like I said, there needs to be better conversations, there needs to be a better relationship, and I think that's why, that's another reason why I'm here, is because I think that I can provide that for the community, between the city and the water companies.
Thank you. Brett?
So, if anybody knows how a grant works, it's when you're failing, you have to be failing in order to receive a grant with the water companies. Grants are only given like that, so with Roscoe saying that they can merge, there's too much, yeah, you're gonna get three companies under one umbrella, that's how the city wants to put it, that they can show that they have a bigger problem to get more grants, but right now, the city's not putting out there that actually the three water companies do work together, they do help each other out on a day-to-day, asking questions, sharing water, I have, I'm a volunteer fireman, water flow is not an issue, some people think that bringing water tenders to a fire is wrong, because why? You need to get in front of the fire, you need structures, you can't, you sit structured, the fire gets ahead of you, you can't, you have to move. So, a lot of information's been giving out to the city, is kind of not a hundred percent the truth, but for grant reasons, you have to be failing, and some of the grants that have been denied to some of these water companies is because they're not failing. And, should they all be separate? I think so, I think they're doing a fine job, I think our city needs to follow the path of working with them instead of against them.
Thank you.
So I actually was at that city council meeting, and I saw the presentation, and it was really good. My perspective on his opinion is that it is just that, it is his opinion, I feel that our city water users have been well-served by having three separate water companies, I don't, in my, in my everyday life, I don't see a need for my company to be merged with another water district. I feel that the division that has been set out is not something that I can stand behind, and I think that I'm well-suited to be a tool to help kind of bring the meeting of the minds to the table and figure out what we can do together to make, make progress together as one out of the division that has been created.
Thank you. Joyce?
Well, it's been unfortunate that this has even been an issue when this was really just asked for talk and information, and unfortunately, the water companies cannot get the same type of grants that the cities can. They can get a few, but they cannot get, but, and we don't have to, as a city, we would not have to get grants just because we're failing, we have the opportunity to be able to get grants to upgrade the lines and make predictions as far as fixing the tanks and the fire flow, which is not adequate for our area, we're a big fire area. That was the main issue for asking the questions to the water companies, we cannot take over, per se Highlands Water Company, that would literally be the shareholders' vote if they wanted that to happen, no matter what, who's sitting on the board, it still would be a shareholders' vote, for the information going out there saying we're gonna take it over was really the miscommunication from the water company, not the city. But there's so much opportunities when we have somebody come in, and you know that as a group you work together, things are more functional, things are better, you know, when you have a unity of all, whether it's them staying separate, but the city and the water companies have to be able to work together, and when the roads are being done, they have to have the funding to be able to put in their new pipes and stuff, so that we're not tearing up our roads over and over again, or then put in their water lines, and then, some of the roads are in the shapes they are because they put water lines after we paved them, they put the water lines in there, they don't pave over the whole road, and so we have the problems of the roads going back to being the way they are. So I think it is, a lot of communication needs to happen.
Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. Grants aren't available just to failing water companies, they're available to others, but it's how they're made up. Conota County Water is available to get grants, in fact, their general manager shared with us that in the past twenty-four, twenty-five years, they've acquired nearly twenty million dollars in grants. That's key in this conversation, because we received a report from the California State Water Board that showed Highlands Municipal Water Company had several issues that were, that they're failing in, this was a concern, and that's what started this issue, was we wanted to meet with the water company to talk about what those problems were, how could we help? And unfortunately, our city manager was escorted out of a meeting, and in one meeting, we went to several, in one meeting, the door was actually locked behind him. The city of Clear Lake can't take property, this, this water company is owned by its shareholders, and the United States Constitution passed in like seventeen eighty-five is the law of the land that says you can't take property. The city isn't interested in taking the property, if I was to vote today, I wouldn't wanna take it, it's got issues, and it's gonna need some help. That's why Highlands isn't one of the groups that got grants, because this grant was denied to them. Golden State is a for-profit company, it shares on the NASDAQ, they don't get grants. But what is best for our folks, that's what I care about, what's best for the health and safety and security of water in our community, and that's what I'm concerned about. My fear is that if Highlands has a failure, was it gonna cost an assessment for the Highlands ratepayers? That's why I was interested in learning more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Personally, I don't see a problem with having three different water companies, what I say is the problem is communication. I honestly think that there's a lot of work to be done for everybody to get on the same page, and if you're not on the same page, things ain't gonna work. I, I really do believe that our water companies that are serving our community, and I also believe that they're our future also, when we get, start growing bigger and bigger, we're gonna need those sources, we're gonna need those companies, and so I just think that it's a matter of, you know, in, on my tribal council, we, general council meetings would go eight, nine hours, because we would be going over and over and over issues that were important for our tribe, and I think that's what needs to happen here, is that we need to have some sit-downs, some serious ones, no matter how long they are, no matter how many days it takes, weeks, whatever, just to get the communication back, and I think that that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
So, Woodland Community College has a water treatment certificate program, and we tell people who enter the program that we have, over fifty water districts in the county, which to me seems like a lot for only sixty-eight thousand people, but it is what we have, and what I think has, what I'd like to see is more transparency, I don't like the fact that the city manager was locked out of the meeting, I don't like the fact that I was given a proxy vote, but I wasn't told, I was given a slate of five people that I could vote for, for my proxy, for the water district, but I wasn't given another choice until I saw that there was a choice. I agree with everyone here that there has to be conversations between the water districts and the city, because if we're gonna have growth, we need water, and we need the infrastructure, and it all has to be safe. I need to know, I mean, I wasn't until I started looking that I found out that the water I'm drinking is full of halo acidic acid, which is carcinogenic, and I drink my water, I, because I filtered myself. I, I think that we, we all have a human right to have water that we can drink right from the tap, that is safe, and I, I think we need to make sure that all the fire hydrants in the, in the city and all work properly.
Thank you. Goes down to David. Thank you. David?
Yes, um, there is a problem with our water system. On one side of the city, we have residents paying some of the highest rates in California, on the other side of the city, we have two water systems that are rated as high-risk by the state of California, that's not a good situation to be in. The city applied a lot of scrutiny to those high-risk systems, and Highlands responded very negatively. Let's move past that, there's some economic realities here, we're a small city, we have three water companies, and the city can barely support one. To grow, to improve our infrastructure, to plan for the future, there needs to not just be cooperation between the water companies, there needs to be a shared mind, so that we know where we're going to and what it's gonna take to get there, and it could take five, ten years, but we're planning ahead as a community. A lot of cities have their own consolidated water companies, this isn't new, there's a game plan to this, it's a playbook, I think either we tackle it now in these next four years, or we have to wait another ten years, and a future city council will come to the same conclusion that we came to, except we have ten years of deterioration and ten years of problems that have built up. If anyone here doesn't think that they can, you're about to beat the city if you're elected, if you don't think you can run a water department, then can you run a police department, can you run a public works department, can you run a planning department? It can be done, it's done often in cities like ours, and I think we have to seriously look at it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Brett, we're gonna continue on the topic of water and its management and distribution within the city. So the situation between the city government and Highlands Mutual Water Company in particular has seen the two putting out mailers, emails, social media campaigns, and advertising as they argue their cases to the community. This summer, it culminated in a lawsuit filed by the city in which a judge ordered Highlands Mutual to hold a new board election, after the city disputed the company's April election in which the current board was re-elected over an alternate slate that was made up with the current city council. Earlier today, Highlands Mutual held that new election. Unofficial numbers available this afternoon show the current water board won reelection in a five-to-one margin over a slate of reform candidates that included several well-known members of the community who also have been concerned about the water company's operations. How specifically, as a city, Clear Lake City Council member, if you're elected, would you work to reconcile the city and Highlands Mutual, as well as the other water companies or districts, in order to improve Clear Lake's infrastructure and water delivery, and open the door to more development opportunities both for homes and commercial enterprises?
We definitely need to have these sit-down talks, I know that they said they had them, they got locked out, they did this, that was a board meeting, I'm losing my train of thought here real quick, the water companies need to possibly tell us what they're gonna be doing in the next future, the city needs to have more talks about what they're going to need in the, in the, in the future, and have those talks. What, what are the numbers that they expect to have? The school districts, three hundred, three hundred people, kids more a year, that means families are growing, we do definitely need water, and if, if everyone works together, it'll help, but they need to sit down together and talk, and I think right now, the talk is gone with, with, with the city council and the water districts. I think that they need new people in there to have these conversations, so we could definitely get going where we need to go. We definitely need infrastructure maybe changed, but at a rate that can be afforded. Highlands Mutual Water Company is a nonprofit, they save up so much money to continue on stuff, tell us where you're going, the city needs to tell us where they're going, so they know, they can plan out stuff. I got in a debate with somebody about how long does it take to find out how long you're gonna give a road to change, this new water, the new roads that they just gave were thrown out there weeks at a chance, you don't have time to buy piping and stuff like that, people don't know that if there is a water leak on the ground, the state of California makes you go eighty feet on each side of it, that's a hundred and sixty feet, they're taking that responsibility by not changing it.
Thank you. Jessica?
Can you repeat the second half of what you said?
Absolutely, absolutely. How specifically, as a Clear Lake City Council member, would you work to reconcile the city and Highlands Mutual, as well as the other water companies or districts, in order to improve Clear Lake's infrastructure and water delivery, and open the door to more development opportunities both for homes and commercial enterprises?
I think I would work very specifically towards that, I think it's a huge issue, it's at the forefront of our, the administration that is in place right now, and it's going to be an issue rolling over into the new council members, I think, you know, we definitely need more residential homes, we definitely need economic growth, and we're gonna have to work with the water company, with the water companies to get that done, so I think that I will work tirelessly to help foster that.
Thank you. Joyce?
I already started doing it, kinda, because when it came to this election, and I seen that it was being put out the same way, I happen, as a senior center director, we happen to belong to another nonprofit shareholder, and they happen to be having their elections, and they sent me some documents, so I politely forwarded it to them, said they might wanna look at this on how they do their elections, even though it's kinda past what they've already were up to doing, maybe the next election, I hope, would be a open, open election, I would hope that we all could have open meetings, both organizations or all three, you know, just have organizations where the community can come in and talk, and that the city can also ask their questions. We have to work together no matter who's where, whether it's own Highlands, Conota, whatever, it doesn't make any difference, we have growth that needs to happen, pipelines that need to be extended and enlarged, fire hydrants that need to be fixed, and I would love to see where everybody sits down and create a plan of how that's going to happen. Our roads, they have plenty of notice to give, our roads aren't put together at the instance, they know when we're doing the roads, we've been advertising that for quite some time, they're always notified, so I just feel like it's time to just put all this aside, sit down, make the plans, that's what we asked for in the first place, is what are the plans to fix these pipelines, so that we can have our, we have a shopping center, that we have a fifty million dollar project in one area to go in, that would create a ton of jobs, that we need to know what to, how the water's going to flow, so I just think we all need to sit down and figure those things out.
Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. This is really a hot topic, and I, I just feel terrible that our community has come to the point where we're basically having high-school-style squabbles on social media, it's embarrassing, I, I tried to share information that I felt was relevant, but when it became name-calling and getting ugly, I stepped out. It went too far, I didn't go too far. I think people were afraid, I think people were given misinformation, as I mentioned earlier, the city can't take over a privately-owned company, it's not gonna fire the employees. What we wanted to do is sit down with the folks that were in charge in that board and say, what do you need? We have roads we wanna build, right now, the ballpark project were held up because they can't, they couldn't afford to put in a water main that was leaking so bad, and even after repairs, it continued to leak, so we worked with them and with our contractor, and the water main was gonna be replaced, so we could pave and not have to cut up the street after we did that. And I'm just using that as an example of the struggle with the infrastructure conversation. So, how do we come together? I, I'm happy to sit down with anybody, when we needed, when we needed to solve our problems with marijuana growth, I created an ad hoc when I was mayor, when we had problems with the roads, and we wanted to get a measure on the, on the ballot to fix our streets, which passed with measure B, I put an ad hoc together, so we could sit down and communicate like adults, but finger-pointing and sharing misinformation is always gonna lead to contention, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you. James?
My opinion is communication, that's the bottom line, if nobody talks to each other, that's, this is what you get, you get, unfortunately, social media is a primary part of our lives now, and anybody or anything can go on there, and it's not, you know, as long as you don't throw out a cuss word, everything goes on the everything goes on the social media. I think that it's one-on-one communication is what's going to be the secret to success. And if you don't do that one-on-one communication, our community is going to fail. Our community is going to, is the one that's going to pay for all the inviting with the two entities. So I think that communication is the secret to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
So part of this is going to sound redundant. Yes, we need to help communicate. I think we could have something like a water symposium where the city sat down with the water districts and said, to repeat some of what Russ said, "What do you need and this is what we need in order to grow the city and to have people be safe." I'm going to go back to, I want to know whether or not my fire hydrant outside of my house works because I know that I'm getting a lower insurance rate and that I even have insurance because I have a fire hydrant there, but it could be, it could be that it doesn't work. I think part of any kind of discussion about the water, it has to be that every single one of us knows that the fire hydrants that we have are working. We had a conversation at the college today. There's a fire hydrant out by the curb, but the president wasn't sure if it worked or not. And that isn't, that is not conchable for a community to have. We have to be totally transparent when it comes to something this like, could be life-threatening.
Thank you. We'll go to David next, if you pass up down here. David?
So I think communication will start improving. I think things will calm down a bit. Shareholders, they're set and pretty clear. We already saw improved communication when Highlands changed their legal council. I think there are some missteps made early and I think it can start smoothing out. I think the challenge we have here is there's a core philosophy differences. You look at Lake Shore Drive from Old Highway 53 to 53 and there's a dire need for an improvement there, but the water company doesn't want to pay for it. They want the developer to pay for it and that puts an burden on developers and they don't want to fork over money that should be in our main street anyway. The proper main should be in our main street anyway and for whatever reason, many years ago, it was never. You look at the avenues and you can see where the water lines stop up there. That's where housing development stops. And it's all paper lots up there. So it's not one developer who's going to take a city block and build 20 or 30 homes. They're individually on hold and it's going to be a nightmare to develop and to extend pipelines and to pay for that without a purpose, without the city or the water company saying, "We're going to, we're going to help grow this city and we're going to extend water lines for future growth. We're going to front that and maybe charge the individual developers later." That's what we need. We need that shared mind, we need that shared philosophy. And right now, I think that's the biggest issue is the city wants growth. We see some of these investments is necessary, the water company, rightfully so, is protecting their shareholders and their territories and they care about their interests. And that's their job to care about that, but the city council's job is to care about the whole city.
Thank you. Tara?
So I think everyone kind of touched on just about everything, so I'm not going to tell you that we need communication. But I think initially, at the beginning, the approach was aggressive as far as the whole, how it all started. Transparency is huge and I think there needs to be a lot of honesty and a lot of conversations that need to happen. We need to rebuild the relationship and hopefully, you know, either if the current, you know, get re-elected or whether it's new faces, like I said, relationships need to start building and trust needs to happen. I think that having regular meetings with the water company needs to happen. We need to vocal, like be vocal about like what our goals are, like, and have a five, 10-year plan as far as like what it will look like with the water companies and kind of like expectations. So yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Jessica. California is on fire and most recently, so is part of the avenues due to the Boils Fire earlier this month. We've had numerous fires in Lake County recently and more than one has threatened the city of Clear Lake. Some jurisdictions in California have created fuel breaks to help control the spread of wildfires. Dry hazardous overgrowth is visible in the avenues and other sections of the city of Clear Lake. What do you propose to do about clearing out the abundance of dry, tall vegetation, dead limbs and other flammable detritus in order to create fuel breaks to help protect Clear Lake residents from wildfires?
I think that the citation abatements are a great idea, but they need to go out earlier. I deal firsthand with a lot of people who own property in that area up there. They will get a notice for abatement and it's due in five days. They live in the Greater Bay Area. They have no resources except for maybe one or two phone numbers of people up here that can get the job done and they're already busy with a list of people who got to them first. So I think that implementing maybe a larger list of people that can help with weed abatement, taking care of those kinds of citations would be good. I also feel that, you know, the city should take a little bit more accountability for the areas where the homeless are, especially, you know, Wilkinson back there, it's pretty treacherous. There's more than just weed abatement that needs to happen back there. There's a lot of dumping, there's a lot of just things left behind. People go up there and they just leave whatever. But I think getting, getting to the homeless, I think will help, help to get them out of the areas that are high fire risks where a lot of these fires actually start in our community that threaten the people in it.
Thank you. Joyce?
Well, it's nice to think the city could go out there and do all these things, but one, we can't go on just private property. So we would love to clear up some of these areas. I agree that I think we need to get more code enforcement citations early on in the year and we need to start really enforcing that situation. City properties do, most likely do need to have some of the cleanups around. I've seen a few areas where, you know, I've reported that we needed to reduce weed whacking because the grass was dry. So again, we need to, we need to stand up also and make sure that our properties are cleared. But a lot of these properties that say where the fire was, then didn't belong to the city and we can't just go in on city property, you know, on somebody else's property and clean it up. It'd be nice if we could because we probably would do a lot of that, but it's not legal for us to do that. So the hope is, is that we do, we need a larger code enforcement and that all takes funding and it would be nice to have more, but you know, funding is a situation when it comes to all of these code enforcement, animal control, it all has to do with funding and that all has to do with economic development. So it kind of all falls hand-in-hand, but I think putting out notices earlier and really strictly enforcing them will definitely help on cleaning up the areas.
Thank you. Russ?
Well, this is a real tough question, especially in our community. And the answer is, just as Joyce pointed out, we can't go on private property and start cutting trees and brush down. It's private property, it's up to those folks to take care of that property themselves. We do send out the citations and we try to get them to debate the problem, but unfortunately with some of our property owners, they're, they don't live here or they've passed away and so those notices go unanswered. We have been actively working, other council members, on Fire Save Council and trying to bring opportunities to the community where they can chip and do other things to remove that vegetation and fire hazards. But what it comes down to, just like our pet problems and things, it's homeownership, it's pride and ownership, it's cleaning up your properties and being responsible. So we can write citations and we write citations a lot and people don't abate it and then the city has to come in and pay the money to clean it up once the case goes through its process. That's a long and arduous process. So we are doing those things as we can. Mentioned the homeless. That's a whole nother animal that we have to try to deal with. And I don't mean that in a derogatory remark, but it's prevalent in every community. I worked very closely and I'm proud to say I was one of the people that originally started Restoration House and worked hard to get Hope Center opened. So we had opportunities and programs for the homeless to get rehoused. I spoke with city manager and we looked at programs that were happening in other communities to create a safe area for people to stay within a safe area. They don't want to stay there. They find themselves where they feel comfortable in the brush and it's a societal problem that we still struggle with.
Thank you. James?
I feel that it's a community awareness situation. I honestly feel that our community is strong enough and big enough that we can report more serious issues that are going on when it comes to local homelessness where if law enforcement has more accessibility to go and patrol and report, take reports from our community and they can act on it. Instead of waiting for that one person that likes to go out there and start the fires, I know that our community is strong enough to where we can report that there's a suspicious person that's up there in the avenues or up there in back of Walmart and all that to where our law enforcement can respond to that and we can start working on getting it taken care of before it's an issue. And I do understand that there's a lot of land that needs to be cleaned. Get those homeless people out there working and cleaning those lots that we don't have anything to do with. You know, like what was said earlier, you've got vacation people that come in, retired people, people that just abandoned their land. We can put them to work. I think it's just a community thing that we need to work on.
Thank you. Mary?
First, I want to point out that we do not have evidence that the fires were deliberately, these last fires were deliberately started. There was somebody who came in and was starting fires tangential to the original big fire, but we have no evidence that this was an act of arson. I think we, so there's an agency called Firewise U.S. that used something like a neighborfest model where you get everybody in your community together and you figure out a plan to clean your neighborhood up. My partner and I are older, but we're outside every single day because we have nine-tenths of an acre and we are cleaning up something constantly. But there are people in the community who can't do that. We have seniors, we have people with disabilities. If we came together and decided for each neighborhood to work together to keep things clean and de-vegetated and sometimes wet, you know, if you're growing something and there's water in the ground, it's not going to start on fire. But I think we have to do things in our neighborhoods and it would probably have to be some kind of nonprofit. Maybe the city could support the use of Firewise.
Thank you. We'll go to David next.
I'd like to start by saying, over by Conoco, they have some very strong Firewise communities and you're absolutely right. This is something our community needs to band together on, we need to work together. There's a bit of a sad story out there. So two years ago, the city acquired the land behind Moore Tractor Supply and worked with Cal Fire to clear all of that there. On the other side of that area, Councilmember Kramer has been working diligently to help build fire breaks to protect us from the east where all that potland can start massive fires. Over at the middle school, they are building a new soccer field and they, I don't know if they did this purposely, but because of, they need to get access up there, they built fire breaks up there and that saved the school. It's really, really important to have this type of mitigation. And again, the city can't do all of it, the community has to work together and whatever we need, Councilmember Kramer and myself will support you. Come to us with ideas, let's move forward with it. I wanted to touch a bit on Jessica's point. You're absolutely right. That area is a mess and up sick, no done. I want to aggressively get that land in the hands of responsible owners. I want to leverage everything legally that we can do to acquire that land through tax default, through aggressive code enforcement, through clean and lean, whatever we need to do. It's a problem and there's multiple areas like that in the city. There's multiple areas like that in the county. Paper lots are a huge, huge issue in Lake County. I want to build a plan so that we can solve it here and the rest of the county can learn from it.
Thank you. Tara?
So I think that ways to kind of go about this is obviously more code enforcement, but that will take more funds. But in the meantime, you could set up some sort of community service program whereas, you know, we can get youth on probation that need community service hours and kind of do those types of services of, you know, cleaning up the area. I think another thing too is providing information to the community. So a lot of times people don't know, like, "I have all this debris, I don't have a truck, what do I do?" Or, "Tons of grass." I know a lot of people that rent their goats out. That's another economical way to get rid of debris and brush and trees. I think maybe we could also offer more free dump days at the waste area. And I think we also need to recognize people who actually do take pride in their lots and where they live and recognize those people with like a beautiful yard award and get a nice cute little plaque in your front yard. I've seen that in other cities. I think that's awesome how they recognize homeownership and just people taking care of their yards and I think that's something that we could provide to the community.
Thank you. Brett?
So we have different areas. We have the grass, the wooded areas that definitely need to be cleaned up. We need to find a way. We also have, I was lucky enough to take a tour from Chris Jennings behind his property, which is behind Wilkinson. It is a disaster back there. There's people living there in motorhomes that don't belong there, that's not even their properties, using the buckets for the restroom. I mean, it's, they are doing illegal stuff. Let's attack them, let's get them out of there. It might move them somewhere else, might move them into town, but we just attack that. We stay on top of people that aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. I fought the fire up in Boyle's Avenue. I was on structure for the first four hours and one of the biggest problems we had was abandoned cars on the street trying to get hoses around them. We had people that had rolls of carpet outside that the hoses were getting stuck on. People tripping over fences that were way too high. That's another situation that code enforcement can do. I get it, it takes money to do this and it's money that we sit on. I mean, by saying sit on it, we spend this money, we don't really recruit much of it. And I really think that there's different sections that we really have to look at and go after different ways. I really like the idea of hitting it really aggressively in that area up there. I've heard actually a plan from our city manager, which I really like, about trying to change that into a Rancho area. But I really do think that the only way to do this is to hit all aggressively in all the areas and the only way we can do that is with code enforcement.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to stay on the fire topic and we'll start with Joyce. During the Boyle's Fire, more than 4,000 people had to evacuate. At one point, firefighters reported that 300 vehicles were backed up trying to evacuate off of Phillips and 40th avenues. What will you do to improve emergency evacuation procedures for future emergencies to ensure people can get out of areas faster, especially the avenues?
Perfect question because I already said we don't utilize all the access that we do have. You know, there are other, we have Palmer, there's other places off of Davis that people could have went down roads that they didn't even realize were there. So I think we need to put a plan together for that area, a mapping of areas. Like if a fire starts here, here's where you need to go. And I think we need to mail it out to the people in each of these areas where their access is limited like that. I mean, we don't want to see anybody get hurt. Traffic got backed up because people don't realize there was these other streets they could have went down. Would have been a lot safer for them to go down them too. So I think that people need to be aware of where their accesses are. And over there, I just don't think everybody, everybody thinks 40th, you know, that's it, that's where they go. They think 18th Street, that's where they go, that's our accesses out. And we just need to make sure that people are informed of those other accesses.
Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. Well, here we go. When I was first elected on city council, we had a big event called the Rocky Fire. We sat down at the command post, Bruno and I were part of that conversation and we looked operationally at what we could do, when the fire would get to the avenues and how we could effectively get people out of the avenues. could effectively get people out of the avenues. We created a plan. It was going to be coordinated with California Highway Patrol, Caltrans and our city police departments. I'm not done yet. And the idea was that through proper planning and execution, Highway 53, both north and south would be blocked off to allow everyone out of the avenues, both out Fort Worth, 18th and on the newly constructed damn road. This is where we failed. We didn't communicate that on to recent times. And I have brought that up with the city manager and the chief of police, that we need to, when we create these plans, we need to make sure that they are written down and that we train from time to time in how we can get people to move out of those high living density areas that are fire hazards. And again, this is just through communication. We should have the same thing in the park. We should have the same thing in other areas within the city when we need to evacuate. I'm proud to say I was mayor when we had the Clayton Fire. We were able to get people evacuated using that plan. We housed them here, we took care of them. When we had the Sulfur Fire, we were able to evacuate people quickly and thankfully, and I am so grateful for this, at this point, we've had no loss of life or serious injuries. We need to do better and I know that we can because we can plan ahead.
Thank you. Was that a Polk ringtone? What was that?
Just glad you didn't jump up and start dancing.
Exactly. James?
I think that an escape plan is something that needs to be put in place. We do it with our kids in our schools, we do it in our businesses, the bigger businesses, it's an escape plan. And it's simple, you know, we have to exercise it like what others said, that our community, law enforcement, our first responders, we can all just exercise it the way we do with our kids in our schools and in our community buildings or businesses. So I think that's what the most important thing is, is to create a plan and make sure that those escape routes are available for easy access for our community members.
Thank you. Mary?
So my partner is really a, I'm going to say a geek about making sure that we know multiple ways to get out of our area for during any kind of evacuation. And I think that everybody in the city needs to become a geek about how do you get out of where you're from. We all are supposed to know our fire zone. I had to put mine in my cell phone because otherwise I can't remember what my fire zone is. I think we need to do the same thing for evacuation routes. We should not just mail it to people, but we should put it on the internet and we should encourage people to have a picture of that in their phone or someplace else so that they know exactly how they can get out in case of any kind of emergency.
Thank you. We'll go to David next.
Like Russ said, we have a city full of bottom decks. There's a lot of areas because of the way this city was planned or not planned that these issues could arise and it's hard to predict each individual scenario. And what is important is understanding who has the authority to make those decisions and who is the matter. Like any fire, we're going to learn from this. We're going to talk with the fire department, county, police department, everyone who was involved and learn and evolve. Sadly, we're getting pretty good at some of these fires because we've learned way too much. But, you know, this one in particular, this is a good learning and something that we can improve upon. I don't want this to take away though from the amazing work that happened in this fire. The fact that we lost 30 homes is astounding. A lot of it has to do with the quick reaction of our police department and of course our fire department, everyone that was involved, water companies. A lot of people responded in a moment of need. Our community stepped up and we saved a lot of homes because of it. So we'll learn and we'll continue learning and do better.
Thank you. Tara?
So I think it was about four, almost five years ago, third day of school at Lower Lake High School, we had to evacuate due to a fire. Talk about loading almost 1,000 kids on buses and taking them to, who went to, I think it's the Park Car lot over by Burns Valley. So that was intense, but ever since then, on the first day of school, we do a fire drill and evacuation plan. And I think it's always something that a tragedy happens and then you learn from it and then that's how you move forward and try to prevent it from happening again. I do want to say though that the roads of our street, or the streets and the roads, it's definitely something that we have to think about and to take into consideration, especially if we want to grow clearly. Like for instance, this happening, can we accommodate more housing? Can we accommodate more people in our community if fires like this were to happen again? Obviously, anyone is welcome to come, but that's just something we've got to think about and prepare for. And maybe we need to fix our road systems and come up with a game plan.
Thank you. Brett?
Egress is very important. We used to have 32nd that used to be able to go through. We used to have Davis that used to go through. You know, I feel that those roads were, or at least Davis was reopened again. They went up to the dumps right there, would have helped a lot. I haven't been personally on Polk probably in about two years because I went up about two years ago to the dumps because I live right over here and I figured out that's the easy way to go. I got stuck. The road literally had three foot cracks in the ground, two feet wide. And this is on lifted four by four charter. I know that there's another, I'm not sure if it's a public or a private road that comes over the backside of that hill. There is ways out of there, but we definitely need to think about opening up more areas to get onto the highway to get out of here. If we have a fire that comes through this corridor right here between Lake Shore and Olympic Drive and works its way up towards the dumps, once you get up to where Conacti Gardens is, you're going to have the same problem. All these apartment complexes and you have two routes out of here. That's it. Unless you come down this way and go out Sulfur Bank, but most people are going to try to get to the highway to get out of here. And we definitely need to talk about figuring out how to make our roads safer with egresses because we were really lucky, really lucky. I personally walked in on the fire from the hospital because the traffic was so bad. I literally parked and hiked in because I couldn't get in. So we definitely need to work on some egress issues throughout this town.
So you got stuck in a four wheel. Who came and got you out?
I own the towing company that came and got me out.
Handy. Jessica?
Has it been fixed?
Yeah. I think that exit route mapping would benefit everybody, especially in a time of emergency, especially if we practice it or it was put out, you know, before the fire season started where people can maybe take a drive with their kids or just make it something that's more routine. And then again, Polk, I was on Polk last year and it saw a pretty big rut in it. So I think that making sure that the maintenance of these roads that we might have to use in the event of emergency are in good shape and good standing, I think that that would be a great benefit.
Thank you. Let's go to a discussion about policing. We're getting, kind of running out of time, but I want to touch on this topic. So the Clear Lake Police Department has made strides in improving its service through community policing, which includes more communication, outreach and a focus on hiring. What is your view on policing in the city? Where is it succeeding? What areas need more attention and how would you address them? And have you talked to members of the police department about your ideas and concerns?
It starts with you. So well, when I got on city council, the police department was not in good shape. So I'm very proud of how far we have come with our police department. We are finally in full force police department, which we have never had before. So that was one of our problems. We never had enough patrol officers. We were lucky, we had two people on patrol, you know, and some of them had to do double shifts. You know, it was not good for our police department. They were wore out and overworked and I mean, people don't realize all the work they have to go through, paperwork and stuff. So I think now that we have a full force police department, we're going to see a lot of difference and we've just barely succeeded in that. So it just takes time to do things. Yes, if I have an idea, I think pretty much everybody knows what my ideas are, whether they act on or not, I don't know. You know, but I think that we're improving our police department. I think more patrol, which we're starting to do, checking out, you know, making sure our businesses at nighttime are safe. They've started doing, you know, checking on doors and stuff. You know, but the patrolling is important and there are always areas, we know there's certain areas that are worse than others. So we need to concentrate, I think, more on, you know, watching those areas better and making sure that high crime areas are watched closer than maybe some areas across the street here, you know. So I think that's one of the concerns that I'd like to see more, you know, focus on areas that are already high crime and we can try to control those. But I think we'll start doing that with our full force police department. So I'm actually proud of our police department.
Just a note, we have inadvertently gone out of rotation. You were supposed to start with Russ.
I thought so.
Oh, I apologize.
But no, it's not your fault. Is everybody okay with just proceeding? Okay, I apologize.
Thank you. This is something that's near and dear to my heart and I have been working really hard since being elected to the city council. In negotiations, I'm always one to advocate for law enforcement because what we need is people that want to be here, people that want to become a part of our community, raise their family here and not just use us as a training ground to move elsewhere. So how do you do that? You have to have a good work environment. You have to give good equipment. When I came here, it wasn't too unheard of to see an old beat up Ford Crown Victoria with wobbly wheels. It had, you know, hundreds of thousands of miles on it. It wasn't safe for the guys to drive in. So advocating for our cops. But most importantly, we need to come together as a community and support our law enforcement. And what can we do to do better? We can support them in giving back some of the tools that they need as far as how they can enforce the laws. Our former chief of police, you know, I was made aware, stopped a gentleman who had a stolen truck pulling another stolen truck on a trailer. He was able to give the gentleman a citation because he couldn't take him to jail because the jail was full and they weren't accepting those, that situation. This is a California problem. I think that we're doing very well in Clear Lake and I think that the folks that we have in our patrol cars cruising the streets, our detectives, they're doing good work and I'm very proud of every one of them and I appreciate the work that they do. Other things that we do that other departments don't do is we actually investigate crimes. We don't just send a mail-in form for somebody to fill out and mail back. We put a cop that's going to do some investigation out on the street. So we are doing better and kudos to the Clear Lake Police Department.
Thank you. James?
I think that community outreach, I think that's a good angle to go, a good direction to go. I think more that our law enforcement is involved in our community and creating events to where they get to meet our community members. I think that our community be more supportive of what they do out there. I know it's tough, I know it's rough, but I think that the more support that we give from our community members, I think that the law enforcement will grow stronger and be more effective for our future.
Thank you. Mary?
Can you read the question again?
Sure.
Sure. The Clear Lake Police Department has made strides in improving its service through community policing, which includes more communication, outreach and a focus on hiring. What is your view on policing in the city? Where is it succeeding? What areas need more attention and how would you address them? And have you talked to the police department about your ideas and concerns?
So I'm going to first admit to that I haven't talked to the police department about any of my concerns and I think I will take that opportunity and attend the judge's breakfast with the chief every week. And I've never actually sat down and talked to you, so I think that we'll do that on one of these mornings. I think that the police in the city, they do a good job. They're, I don't see them profiling anyone that I, that the way it happened in the past in other areas in the county. And I do, I think Russ said something about staying here. And I think one of the ways we could make sure that it's a better possibility that the police stay here is if we worked with Lake County campus to start a training program. It is proven that when you train at home, it's more likely that people will stay at home.
Thank you. Next move to David.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to give some credit to Joyce and Russ. When I joined city council a year, four years ago, they have a hiring philosophy, a negotiation philosophy that has proven successful. Retained officers, we've changed the culture. Talent is so important. When we hire department heads, having someone that we know, we can trust to do their job and leave the city is vital. We've had two really great ones back to back in Chief White and Chief Hops. And they have really built organizations that we can be proud of. We've seen crime drop, we've seen response times drop. We've seen a lot of positive metrics now. Is it perfect? No. But the improvement is astounding. I mean, earlier, a couple of years ago, we were lending cops to Lakeport because of how strong our police department was. And we helped them rebound and now they're at full force. So it's just a lot of cooperation between our law enforcement and it was great to see. But I'll go back to something that Chief White said that I really appreciated and the best way to lower crimes is through economic stability. If you have a job, if you have one that you're proud of, you're less likely to do some of the bad things that we catch people into. And so that's why when I talk about solving some of the problems here, we've got to look at the root causes. You know, people don't do that because they want to do that. Some cases they do. They do bad because of their conditions. And I think it's our job as a city council to put the right people in place to enforce law, but then try to change the conditions around the city to make money.
Thank you. Tara?
So I will first start out by saying that I really appreciate Clear Lake PD for giving us Officer Perry at the high school. Our SRO does tremendous, amazing work with our students there at the high school. And I'll tell you, before we had Officer Perry, we had a contract with Lake County sheriffs and we never saw an officer on campus until we got with Clear Lake PD and we have Officer Perry. So I want to thank Clear Lake PD on behalf of that. One thing that I would like to see maybe is a special task force for like traffic and tickets. You know, just something that we can just work on as far as like parking and people riding around with dirt bikes and no helmets or, you know, cars with no windows or something like that. So, because I know our, because I talked to a lot of police officers and the one thing that they need to do is have a bad rapport with community members. So I think by having certain people assigned to certain jobs as far as like ticketing and stuff like that, it might be beneficial for the community. And then also probably, what do I say, better response times to call 911 calls. Two years ago, I called 911 because there was someone shooting a gunfight out in front of my house and it took 17 minutes for patrol officers to show up. So I mean, that was two years ago, granted, I know things have changed since then, but just something like that, just from my experience, I think a better response time would be something worth looking into.
Thank you. Brett?
A lot of people don't realize that the police department has their hands tied. They can only do so much before something really happens. Our judicial system does not back them. It's really sad. I do agree with what you said about what Chief White said. I also think, and I personally have not talked to the police department about any of my ideas. I think they're doing a good job from what they had their hands to do. One thing I think we can do to help retain some of the officers, because we are still losing officers here and there. I think that the police department used to have years ago, it was called Cop on Block. Is that what it was called? Where they actually helped phone the house for them with a certain down payment to bring them in. I think that that's something we should really look back into. I also do believe that we have been hiring, you know, people that are I also do believe that we have been hiring, you know, people that are from our area. That's great, they know a lot of people. A lot of people see, you know, their friends doing bad things and they're like, hey, what are you doing? You know? I know who you are, you know, you can't get around this. But I really think that the old, the old system with the cop on the block might actually help bring in some more officers. I think we do need more officers. And because their hands are tied, they're running their tails, just like the fire department is. But I really believe that they, that they're doing a fair job and I'm proud of it.
Thank you. Jessica?
The growth that I've seen with the relationship between the community and the police, I think, is in a really good spot. I think that a lot of our community members have a great amount of respect for the law enforcement and I think having locals as officers really helps. You know, I have an instance where I had an officer at my house for a couple of swim parties and it's just, it's fun to see them grow up and to be integrated, important roles in our community. I think that listening to them, having, if I get a seat, I would love to have a sit-down and listen to what their needs are. I don't know what their needs are, but I would love to be able to, to listen and figure out what they need. What do they think that they could use to get officer retention or recruitment numbers up? Is it increased pay? Is it more, more, just like perks or bonus, bonus things? Fun event days? I know that the, when they like shop with the kids at Walmart, that always seems to be something that makes the news and everybody loves to see it, you know? Maybe we can do some more community involvement like that. But overall, I think that we have a great police department and I really support everything that, what they do for us.
Thank you. So the last one was a poll cup. Was that big, Ben? Who just went off? It was a sergeant. I see him over there.
The red one?
Yeah, the red, red one.
Green one?
We're going to go, send it out to Perry because we're going to go into closing statements. The evening has gone fast, everyone. We have, we could probably spend another, do one of those eight or nine-hour meetings that James was talking about, but I don't want to do that yet. No thanks. So we're gonna, we're gonna do closing statements. So, you know, we haven't been able to touch anywhere near all the issues, but this is your time to talk about the issues that you specifically want to. We're going to give you two minutes to sum up. Maybe you want to talk about something from earlier, maybe you want to bring up something that we didn't get a chance to talk about tonight. So you're going to each get, again, get two minutes. We're going to go in reverse alphabetical order and we'll start with Mary.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I took some notes on. One of them is in regards to the evacuations that we were talking about earlier. The college sits right next to their, next to Obsidian. And there are a lot of children that have to be evacuated out of that school. Yeah, there's two exits, but there's a lot of kids that have to get out of there. And there's a lot of traffic there in the morning. I, I think that's something that we have to look at as a city. A second one is Joyce talked a little bit about our elders and one of the things that, and the fact that most of our elders are on very limited incomes. I have a friend whose property taxes have gone up three times in the last four years. And she is afraid she's going to lose her house because she can barely pay her taxes. If she has to move somewhere else, she's not going to be able to afford the rent. And we, we need to find a way to make sure that our elders can stay in their homes and have programs to help them pay for their, their taxes. And then there's something else I'd like us all to think about. So we talked a little bit about the fact we need 21st century infrastructure. The fact of the matter is 75% of the infrastructure that's going to exist in 2050 has not been built yet. And I think we need to look at things like the climate change, the fact that we're, have a lot of wildfires, et cetera. And we need to actually build resilient infrastructure. And it would cost about 3% more to put, to build infrastructure that could survive a disaster and the return would be about four times the amount of money we paid for every dollar.
Thank you. James?
I'd like to start off by saying thank you for having me here tonight. I think this is a new adventure in my, in my political career. Although I'm not a politician, I'm a people person, I'm a community person. And I want to say, there's a couple positives that come out of tonight. I hear a lot of the ideas that we do have, all of us sitting up here, a lot of them are on the same page. It just comes down to if we're really going to back what we really do say up here and if we're going to move forward with the ideas and how we move forward. Planning is very important, just as important as communication with each individual. I, I love the idea when I, when I pull up to Burns Valley to drop my daughter off for school in the morning, I love, every once in a while, I see law enforcement out there. I would like to see that every day. It's a stressful thing when you drop your children off and you start thinking, you know, there's people out there that walk on to the campuses and, and do bad things. So I appreciate that when I do see law enforcement out there. I'd like to see more. And I do care about our community and I'd like to see positive changes and stop with the bickering, stop with the, you know, social media. I don't believe in, I, I'm old school, so I believe in, you know, face-to-face talks, open-door policy. And, and that's what I want to see for our community. That's the only way we're going to survive. And we're going to grow and we're going to be a great place. And Clear Lake is already a great place to go. Let's just make it better.
Thank you. Russ?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all so much for coming down and I hope people are catching this at home so they can make a good decision come November 5th. So again, my name is Russ Perdok, I'm asking for your vote. Things that I've done in the last two terms since I've been on city council is we worked on a mission and vision statement and we've held true to that. Everything that we do and in the ordinances that we pass, all needs to comply with that mission statement and we do that regularly. I worked at and advocated for the Measure B project and so far we've paved 53 miles of new streets in the residential streets. The mains, we can get gas money and gas tax for. For the residuals, there was no plan prior to Measure B. So I'm very proud of the accomplishments. And Ray, you can still drive around with your piece of plywood telling everybody I got that done. Anyway, homelessness and homeless solutions. When I served as mayor, it was very important to start looking at what we could do. And we identified people that we called high utilizers. And we wanted to get them the help that they needed. And with that came, again, the creation of Restoration House and Hope Center. And in the first year, we housed 20 people out of Hope Center. Very proud of that. And in the time that Restoration House was open, people with medical needs, there's a high barrier facility, so it's, you have to have those medical problems to get in there. But we got them housed and in a couple of cases, they were actually able to buy their own homes once we got them the help that they needed. Very proud of that. Austin Park, it started out, it was a mess. And nothing against the prior councils, because I actually remember council members out there with their personal vehicles and tractors trying to make it a nice park for everybody. But every time I drive by that park right now and I see families out there enjoying it, it's wonderful and I'd love to see it. And I love to see the waterfront that we have, that we've been able to create. Housing and development, we really need it. People need to be able to step into housing and through condominiums and other less expensive forms of housing, I think we can help our people get into solid housing and have that value of homeownership. The airport property has been something that's been on, on the table for so long and we need to get it done. Very proud of the work we're doing there. The box store isn't going to work, but with that and a self-partnership, we should be able to build something there. And I ask for your vote November 5th.
Thank you. Joyce?
I'm not going to reiterate everything he did because we pretty much did that, but we're both set on council. So I appreciate the council that I sat on. You know, one of the things I think I did when I first got on council was the counties and the cities and the school districts were not talking to each other. That was just something that didn't happen. You know, you mentioned, oh, call the county and the city manager is like, oh, we don't work with the county and same with the county. So one of the things, the first council, you know, first year I was on council was working to make that happen and creating, you know, meetings and having our managers meet and our supervisors from the, the school boards and stuff meet and start that communication. And today, that is going very well. They meet on a regular basis, they talk, and that's how, that's how things get done, is by working together. That's, you know, and I'm proud to do that. Schools and jobs, I think we need more straight trade schools here. I think that's just something that I think we all know needs to happen. It's wonderful that, that we have a welding class, but I think we need to do more things like, you know, coding is the new era of our, you know, it's going to be a, I think we need to have some classes here where they can teach the kids to do coding. I think that education is, is, you know, is the forefront for our youth. They have to, they have to have those specialty schools. They're not all going to go, like you said, they're not all going to go get master's degrees or bachelor's degrees. So let's give them something that they can get. Hotel and restaurants, they're coming. Hopefully someday we can get the water there and everybody on board, the tribes on board to make that happen. So things are progressing and they have come a long ways since I first sat on city council. But, you know, running a city of 17,000 isn't easy. You know, I spent the first four years pretty much going to school and training and trying to know what to do. As you come off the streets, you just don't know, you don't realize how, how hard it is to do this. But, you know, I did, I was very proud that I, I worked with our senators and assembly people to learn what is needed here. And I was able to capture, keep our infrastructure from our, our roads, you know, not being taken. I was able to keep a million dollars in healthcare in our county, fighting for that at the state. So it's not just here in, in the city that you have to work. You have to make those fights at the, at the state level too.
Thank you.
And I'm asking for your vote.
Jessica?
So I'll start by bringing up just two things that I wasn't able to touch on. I think that focusing on keeping the youth at the forefront of right now is really important to me. I really want to be an advocate for them. You know, if the sports complex keeps continuing to have the lakes, I think we need to figure out a way to make our current facilities more functional for them. Our ballparks have been swept under the rug, all still all being expected to be used. We have very talented kids come out of this community, kids that play their heart out down there no matter what the field looks like. They bring home titles and I think that they deserve to be considered in the now and not just in future plans. And then second, it wasn't brought up at all, but I think the lake's water quality condition, especially here down on the south end, should be a high pri, it's a high priority to me and I think should be with others. Clear Lake is the centerpiece of our community and I think that more damage is being done with each bad summer than maybe we realize. During the summer months, it's our highest home sales volume. It's when people are shopping, people are coming from out of the area, they're coming to visit, they haven't been here in years. And, you know, to be met with a stench when you step out is really, it's not, it's not a good thing. I think that it will go hand in hand with making sure that whatever kind of economic development we have is successful. People are, we need people to want to stay here and want to live here. And in closing, I just want to say that ultimately, my bottom line is that I just really have a passion for Clear Lake and the community members. To me, Clear Lake is a gem, the city of Clear Lake is a gem. Through my travels, I have found that Clear Lake's beauty is really just unmatched. And the city of Clear Lake holds the best view to the lake of all. During the whole entire nomination and campaign process, I always go back to the parables in the Bible. When I'm having a moment of doubt or how, or of nervousness like I am tonight, I just recount the countless times that God has used people that may not seem qualified to carry out important tasks, reminding myself that he doesn't always call on the qualified, but rather he qualifies the call. And I look forward to having to see in the council, helping to push forward my ideas and I'm just very excited for this upcoming season in my life.
Thank you. Brett?
Everyone looks across the street, it's a beautiful park. We can't focus on just that park. We have five other parks. We have senior centers, we have youth centers. Some people say, see, the senior centers are really the community center. I, I live over in that area, it's a senior center. We need to make that clear. We, our seniors are some of the last, this is the last stuff they're going to see for their lives, right? They came here, they want to see it beautiful. I want to see it beautiful. We have youth that needs to be brought into here, seeing a beautiful place. We really need to work on that. Fire departments, law enforcements, we all need to get along. Transparency is very important to me. Keep the truth going. And that's what this all comes down to. I really hope that people sit back, they do watch this. And I might not be the best talker in front of a bunch of people, I can talk one-on-one with people, but I'm trying my hardest to bring this city to a place that we can do better at. We all band together when stuff happens here, that we might bicker and fight like brothers and sisters, but when it comes down to it, we become a, we become, we become a family when something happens majorly here. And it's, we've, we've seen it multiple times. And I do thank the past city council for getting us this far. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara?
So some of the things that I didn't discuss, but I'm definitely passionate about is, like Jessica, our youth, the future of this community. But we do need some, provide some things for them. And one of them is a safe place to swim. Obviously, like our lake, it's great in June, May, June, early June is good. After that, it's not so great. So, and then our rivers are a little too fast sometimes in the years, it's not ideal. So we need a pool. I know there's been talk that pools are expensive, they go bankrupt. But if it's ran properly, and I think it's a task that the city can probably prove to the community that we can do. And there's grants to build pools, there's YMCA's that we can bring to this community who provide day camps and summer camps for kids. We have this beautiful park, so much space. There should be no problem to have a summer camp for kids. We have the area and it's a great place to promote healthy lifestyle. Another thing I would like to see is a bike path. Not, not bike paths on the street, I mean an actual, like, maybe a five or seven mile loop where we can get kids out there riding bikes safely with families. And not only that, it will promote tourism as well. Like, people are going to come here, like, I want to go test out that five, seven mile loop and see what that's about and then have a view of the beautiful lake. I think it's really important that we do actually build a cute downtown, just like how we see in Lakeport and Kelseyville. I think that's important, we need to have that for our, you know, our community, our kids, shopping, small businesses. And then another thing too is that my strength is leadership. As a leader, you see weakness, you observe it, you analyze it, and then you take action. And that's kind of like how I live by as far as working at the school, coaching. And I think that I can implement that out of the city council. I may not have the, you know, the greatest experience being in politics, but I believe I'm a learner and I can work quick, I can work hard, and I think I can implement that. So.
Thank you. David?
Well, first I just want to say, what a great group of candidates we have. It takes a lot to come up here and I honestly didn't know what to expect, but, because I know we have some disagreements, I'll learn from your issue. But it's clear that everyone here cares about the city and moving it forward and that's all I can ask for. I wanted to just touch on the airport and Burns Valley Sports Complex because, you know, you hear it and it sounds, it sounds like a great project, it sounds like a no-brainer. It took a lot of work to get to this point. A lot of thoughtfulness, a lot of innovation, a lot of analysis. And then, especially at the airport, that, that's been stalled for 20 years. The deal that, at the time, they had Perdok sign to get us that event is clinic, is huge for our community. It's the most important project, I think, in all of the, kind of, the development of that airport and, and moving it forward. To get to the core, a vote for me is for, a vote for someone who's physically conservative. We've had structurally balanced budgets all four years that I have been in office here. I'm someone who's going to scrutinize every fee increase, every bloated project in every budget. I'm going to attack the root causes of problems. There's a saying, you can afford anything, you can't afford everything. Prioritization is key. And we have to prioritize the things that are going to move us forward and the symptoms of problems. That, I am someone who's willing to say no to people who have heard yes for a very long time, that's important here. There's a status quo that we need to break to move things forward. And that may cause some debate, disagreement at times, but if we're all focused on moving the city forward, we can come to a solution. I think I have professional experience that's unique to this pool of campus and I think my perspective is something that's limited in the city council, especially in a city where we have limited resources that we have to maximize. And that is my focus. So thank you, thank all of you for coming, thank you to the
Thank you, everyone. David Clavie, Tara Downey, Brett Freeman, Jessica Hooton, Joyce Overton, Russell Purdock, James Rivera, and Mary Wilson, thank you for coming out, participating. Thank you for everyone who submitted great questions and who came tonight. Thank you also to the city of Clear Lake, Melissa Swanson, as well as Monica Rosenthal, our timer, and Thomas from PEG, and John Jensen from Lake County News 4 reporting. This will be available on the Lake County News website, as well as PEG's YouTube channel. So thank you, everyone. Get out there and vote, and make sure to talk to these candidates some more. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Elizabeth. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Get out there and vote, and make sure to talk to these candidates some more. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you. 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 Thank you.